I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and take the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, amahah, and that is all with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from our last regular board meeting.
Approve the minutes.
Any questions, discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections.
I approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Any questions, discussion of that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Moving on to educational highlights. Intermediate School, Mr. Andrew Jordan.
Hello and welcome. One of the things we've always appreciated is the support for the fine arts. And, you know, we get to see the bands' performance. We get to see all those things. But I think a big part of it starts with the love of music that these kids get to develop at a young age. And so tonight, I have Michelle Grover and some of our intermediate scholars here. And they're going to highlight one of the things that they do during music, which I'd never heard of until I started in this building, which is using boom whackers. And, I mean, gosh darn it, what's not fun about a boom whacker? Michelle?
Hi. We're so excited to share one of our music activities with you. Not only is this used at the intermediate, but is beginning to be implemented in all three elementary levels. We wanted to share this fun music unit with you to represent the intermediate. Because the pit players are currently using boom whackers in our lessons. And even the other teachers have noticed what a fun lesson this is.
I'll start. I'm gonna straighten a song for you. And then you feel the chance to play this. These notes, these will be part of the melody. Ah, uh, 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 company.
The boom whackers are different sizes. Pitches get higher as the tubes get smaller.
We're gonna get started. Guys, you got your one tune right now. There we go.
The thing that's different about a verbal vacation home? Long, colorful dress.
The boom whackers are different sizes. Pitches get higher as the tubes get smaller.
Okay, so Breton, can you take your caps off, kids? Breton is gonna play a C. So Breton, go ahead and stand up and play your C. Yep. Be ready to play your D. Good, Breton. And then Ethan plays a D. E. Where's that? F. G. A. A, what's gonna be? Don't play an A.
I'll play Parker.
A, B, Parker. C. All right, let's see if we can do this. On the count of three, get yourselves in order from low-pitched C to high-pitched C. Stand up, for those of you who just played. Breton, you stand up. Ethan, go stand by Breton. Um, and then, yep, Jack, or... You go stand by Ethan. You go stand by Ethan with the E. All right? And then Ryla. Then Parker. And Kylie. All right. Hold yours up so we can all see the difference, guys. So the different lengths show different pitches. Okay, go ahead, Ella, keep going. And you guys come back to your seats.
The mathematician Pythagoras discovered that if a sound wave is divided into its an octave, imagine pitch, like, like, C to C.
Okay, can I have my Cs, my big Cs play? Big Cs play, go ahead. And then my high Cs play. Can you stand up and cover your pants so we can hear you really nice and loud? Ready? Go ahead, low Cs. Good, and then high C? Beautiful. And Katie? Do you know what yours is? You go get it. Ella, go.
Oh, well, what about this one?
So Ella, is that an octave?
Yep, that's an octave too.
All right, so we have different sizes for different octaves. Go ahead, Addison.
The other classes are a little jealous. They haven't had the unit yet. But they'll get their turn. We also thought boom whackers would be easier to share than recorders because we would like you to participate.
To play the boom whackers successfully, you need to feel the steady beat of the music. It's like the song's heart. You need to watch the screen to know when to play. What you see is not standard, noted music. But it does help you when you play your boom whackers.
Okay, so everyone, if you could please go get your boom whackers to share with our members. They're behind them. Yep. Okay, Captain, go get yours. You just go stand, why don't you go stand over here by your face? Yep, you and I over here. Yep. Keep your, take a seat. You have low Cs. Okay, Breton, take it. So we got it? Okay. We thought that was your favorite color. Did you appreciate that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ryla, can you say your part, please? Thank you.
As as this steady beat, another music standard is to play with proper technique. We know these are just plastic tubes. But if you listen, you can hear if you are hitting too hard or muffling the sound. Hitting the tubes on your knee is a cupped hand or on the table helps the sound.
Okay, so if you have a red C, can you try to play your C? Ms. Holdrick and Mr. Knoll, if you hold where the sticker part is, because it's so large, it might help you control a little bit better. But Cs, red Cs, can you all play yours? Yep, you hit it. That's going, I hit your boom whacker. Oh, there you go. Okay, orange Ds, can you hit yours? Good. And yellow Es? And green Fs? And green Cs? And purple As? And, um, what do we have left? The pinkish Bs? And the high Cs? Great. So we are going, um, let's go ahead. And Breton, do you have your part to say?
We also have to bond as groups. This is not only a music standard, but a good life skill working together as a team.
And Kylie? Now, you all are going to get to play with us. Don't worry. This is an activity that can easily be modified for age and ability limits. Instead of two boom whackers, you only have one. You also won't have tricky rhythms like we did. Just keep the beat. And then, Freddie Parker? Can you say your part in the microphone here?
Dr. Breton is right there.
As you play with the, hit your boom whacker when your color envelope drops to the two. There are two red tubes that are different sizes. Again, these are, these are octaves. If your boom whacker is the long C, follow the left tube. If you have a short, red C, play when it drops to the right tube.
One more word of advice. At the beginning, there'll be a very long, instead of a dot, there's gonna be a very long line. And you just keep hitting it over and over and over again until your line stops. I'm sorry, about that. Oh, and sometimes you may have two colors happening at the same time. Good luck, I know you'll do great. Thank you for participating with us. Kids, if you could put your boom whackers in the basket. And don't forget the ones here on the side at our seats. I'd like to thank Elia Springfield, Ellie Higley, and Addison Rory, and Ryla Scheidler, and Jack Banks, and Ella DeHart, and Breton Black, and Ethan Johnson, and Parker Kay, and, what's the last name of your partner? Parker Kensington and Kay Parsons. And I think that was it. School board, thanks for supporting the music program at the department. I really appreciate that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Michelle, do you think we're gonna blow the rope, please?
I think we should. Especially you and Mr. Knoll with the ace ones. Those are awesome.
As long as it's still on, yes. You guys can go. Yes. At this time, you may go home and do your homework. If you haven't done any sharing. I want to give a place out of the... Moving on to items of business. Please, the invoice is coming, Toggins.
I move to approve report number 221121, dated November 21st, 2022. Approved general fund check number 7966 to 7984, dated October 20th, 2022, through November 16th, 2022, for the aggregate amount of $2,68,610.75. Broken down as follows. Payroll: $747,733.28. Benefits: $941,857.58. Payables and prepaid: $379,019.89. For a total of $2,68,610.75. For special revenue fund check numbers: 3715 to 3725, for the aggregate amount of $135,907.79. For payroll benefits and AP prepaid. For bookstore fund check numbers: 1798 to 1800, for the aggregate amount of $9,789.14. For SP prepaid. For student activities fund check numbers: 2332 to 2333, for the aggregate amount of $10,765.61. For AP prepaid. For 2012 school bond debt retirement fund wire, for the aggregate amount of $62,812.50. For AP prepaid. For 2016 school bond debt retirement fund wire, for the aggregate amount of $35,300. For AP prepaid. For 2012 QZAP bond debt retirement fund wire, for the aggregate amount of $1,882.21. For AP prepaid.
There's support. Any questions, discussion of the check register? Hearing none. All in favor of paying the bills, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Moving on to personnel. This time, middle school principal Josh Born.
Good evening, everyone. Before I actually recommend the hiring of Eric Kimbler, I wanted to thank Ms. Pearlie. She's not here. But we started the year without an English teacher for 7th, 8th grade. And she stepped in and did a really nice job for us, built great relationships with the kids, and took on a difficult task of teaching English in middle school. So I'd like to thank her. But I'm here to recommend the hiring of Eric Kimbler. Mr. Kim, actually, it'd be the rehiring of Mr. Kimbler. He was here with us last year. Circumstances took him and his fiancee to the Grand Rapids area. And that move just didn't work out. So they're back down here. And to our benefit, gives us the ability to bring him back into the classroom. He had a full career in Indiana. Did a great job for us last year. We'd like to see him teach in 7th and 8th grade English. Thank you.
So we have, we need a motion to hire Josh, Josh, sorry, Eric Kimbler as an English teacher in the middle school. So move. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. We welcome him back. Moving on to Naola policy readings. This is the second reading and is up for adoption. Naola policy is number 37.1. Policy number 0144.1 is revised compensation. Number 6108 is new authorization to electronic, to use electronic transfers of funds in automated clearinghouse arrangements. Policy number 6460 is revised vendor relations. Number 6700 is revised Fair Labor Standards Act. Policy number 7440.03 is revised small unmanned aircraft systems. Number 8805 is deleted flags and displays. Number 9150 is revised school visitors. Number 2413 is revised critical health problems. Number 2430.01 is revised special programs by community volunteers. Policy number 8220 is revised school day. So we need a motion to accept those. So move.
Support.
Any questions, discussion of the Naola policies? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Moving on to comments from the audience. Jim, would you like to say something first?
Yes. With us tonight is Mr. Dan Martin. Mr. Martin is an attorney from Trune Law Firm. He has some comments for... Do you have any other comments?
Thank you, Jim. As Jim mentioned, I am with the Trune Law Firm. We represent the Edversburg Public Schools. And I'm here to let you know that the Edversburg Public Schools has legal responsibilities under both state and federal law for protection of pupil privacy act and the federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act to protect the privacy of students' educational records. Because of these state and federal laws, school officials cannot comment on any specifics when responding to reports, whether they're made in news articles, blogs, social media posts, or any other forms that might contain false, misleading, or inaccurate information that is related to students. If school officials were to comment and correct that false, misleading information, that could result in the school officials violating state and federal law with respect to disclosing person identified information or information that can be connected back to the particular students and put you at risk of losing federal funds. As the school district's legal counsel, I can assure the district that the district is committed to complying with those state and federal laws, as well as other state and federal laws. And that includes not only privacy, but ensuring a safe school environment for all students. You have Board Policies 2110 on a statement of philosophy that sets forth that. 8400 on school safety information. And 8410 on crisis intervention. Complying with other state and federal laws, we are against civil rights, including but not limited to Title IX, which deals with sex harassment. Preventing discrimination, providing equal access to educational opportunities for all students, including but not limiting to addressing sex-based harassment. including but not limiting to addressing sex-based harassment, discrimination, and sexual assault. That's Board Policy 5517, Policy 2260 as well. Providing safe and nurturing educational environment for students or, and prohibiting bullying, prohibiting aggressive behaviors, prohibiting violence. Board Policy 5517.01 deals with that. Then also complying with other state laws such as the Child Protection Law, which requires many school officials who are mandated reporters to report suspected child abuse or neglect if they have any reason to suspect them. Their obligations are to report it when they suspect child abuse or neglect. So without getting into any specifics of any specific allegation regarding any specific students, I can tell you as a general matter that when school officials receive complaints of bullying, sexual harassment, sexual violence, school officials will conduct an investigation in that. And when it pertains to violations of the law such as sexual violence, they will report the same to local law enforcement and child protective services. Local law enforcement will conduct its own independent investigation, separate and apart from the district's investigation. If law enforcement, including the county prosecutor's office, finds that there's probable cause to bring criminal charges, but the prosecutor believes they could prove it beyond a reasonable doubt, criminal charges would be filed against an individual who commits a crime against another individual at school, on school property, et cetera. If school officials find that there is a preponderance of the evidence to warrant the discipline of a student such as suspension or expulsion, that student would be suspended or expelled. If they're expelled, they're going to come before you. And so again, without getting into any specifics, I can assure you that since I've been representing the district, I'm not aware of any situation where the district has failed to comply with state or federal law or your board policies with respect to those kinds of issues. Thank you.
So are there any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none. We need a motion to adjourn? All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.